And welcome candidates and all those in attendance here at home and online. As a courtesy, please silence your cell phones. This is the Corleville City Council and Mayor Candidate Forum. All candidates in the contested elections have been invited to participate in this forum. My name is Karen Franklin. I am a member of the Johnson County League of Women Voters and I will be the moderator this evening. The League is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside of the room following this forum, but no buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed inside the room. We ask that no questions or outbursts, we shall not have any outbursts, please, come directly from the audience. The League supports the free and open exchange of ideas through civil discourse. Please hold any applause until the end of the forum. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also provide them with information on issues to assist their educated participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Women, men, whatever, we welcome you. Join us, we can use your time, your talent, and your treasure. League members advocate and inform voters democracy works best when more people are involved. You can find us at www.lwvjc.org for instructions on how to join. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. At the start, each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with one from the League, followed by ones submitted on cards by you in the audience. League members are or have distributed cards and pencils for you to write questions on. You can submit them, as many written questions for the candidate as you wish. If during the forum you think of something, hold up your card, a League member will get it, will bring it to me. I will consolidate any questions that are similar in topic. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each question will be asked of all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will not be time for rebuttals, sorry. Near the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. League member Deanne Muir, to my left, will serve as timekeeper and use cards to alert candidates when time is about up and then when it's up. There are eight candidates for the three city council seats. Obviously, three will be elected by November 4th. The eight candidates are Katie Freeman, Deborah Gill, Kathy Hudson-Piller, Hi Nguyen, Mike Knutson, who's joining us online because he's in San Diego for business, poor guy, Marshall Pope, Derek Schroeder, and Jennifer Struthers. I think I got everybody there, yeah. There's two candidates for mayor. Again, one obviously will be elected by November 4th. The two candidates for mayor are Lori Goodrich and Ryan Swanka. So, let's get started with opening statements. Please speak loudly and into your mic so everybody can hear. You have two minutes each, and we'll start with Katie Freeman.
I was not prepared for that, okay. All right, so I'm gonna read comments just to settle my nerves. Hello, and first I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, giving our community the chance to learn more about the candidates running for city council and mayor. And thank you to everyone here tonight, those watching live, and those who may be tuning in later. I really appreciate you taking the time to get to know the people who want to earn your vote and help guide the city of Corleville. My wife and I moved to Corleville in 2014, when our oldest was not quite a year old. At first, we chose Corleville when we moved back to Iowa from California because it was close to Iowa City and near Cedar Rapids where my wife worked at the time. Since then, we've truly come to love this community, the parks, the trails, the library, and most of all, the diversity. For a city our size, that diversity is something special and not something experienced by most Iowans even in larger cities. That's why I don't think I'm alone in saying that right now, I'm afraid for my neighbors, my friends, and myself. I'm angry watching the government-backed kidnapping of Pedro in West Liberty and of Jorge at the Bread Garden in Iowa City and others. I'm angry seeing our state and federal governments take away civil rights from people simply because they don't understand them. But I also know that fear and anger alone won't change anything. The only way forward is to turn them into action, to work alongside my friends from marginalized and targeted groups.
We need, just wind it up, okay? Finish your sentence.
Say, I want the city council to become more community-driven, and to do that, we need to make the table bigger. And as a woodworker, I feel confident I can do that.
Sorry. Deborah Gill is next up.
Hi, I've always lived in southeast Iowa with the exception of three years when my husband was in the US Navy and we were stationed in Rota, Spain. So I've had the experience of living in a foreign country where I didn't know the language or the customs. I'm a graduate of Iowa City High School and the University of Iowa with a BBA in Finance and Economics. I feel it's important to be an active part of the community you live and work in. Corleville is a thriving community, and I want to be part of helping the city continue to excel. Excuse me, I've been campaigning for the local option sales tax ever since I started campaigning, and that's my number-one priority. If we don't pass the local option sales tax this time, we won't get another chance, since Johnson County is going for a new sheriff's department and jail in 2026, and they'll need to do a bond issue or a sales tax for that. The local option sales tax creates a long-term funding stream for the city and provides property tax relief. Corleville is a shopping and entertainment hub for all of southeastern Iowa, and the Corleville Convention and Visitors Bureau brings in millions in revenue from visitors, and this will only increase the amount we make from lost. So it's a win-win situation for us. My second priority is building the new recreation center and upgrading the youth sports complex. I'm also anxious to see the Gather Iowa Project on Second Street, which will be a welcome upgrade to the Corleville Strip. My other feeling is that with the increase in population in North Liberty and Tiffin, I see a definite increase in the amount of traffic in our Corleville neighborhoods, and I would like to see-
Time's up. I'm gonna come around the corner a little bit, so tell me to move. That's probably the only two people that won't be able to see Kathy. I think we probably saw that, sorry. Okay, ready? Kathy Hudson-Piller, please.
My name is Kathy Hudson-Piller, and I've lived in Corleville for 20 years. Both of my children graduated from West High School. I'm an optometrist and currently practice at Roggi Eye Clinic right down the street. I've served on my church's racial and social justice teams, organized voter registration events, spoken up at city council meetings, and volunteered at the food pantry. I'm running for city council because we all want the same things, a safe place to live, to be able to provide for our families, and to connect with people. Everyone deserves to have the resources and opportunities to achieve these basic needs. I want to bring people together. Instead of allowing our political views to divide us, we need to embrace our diversity and focus on our shared interests. Four years ago, I was appointed to the Community Policing Advisory Board. The board was in charge of examining traffic stop data for discrimination, recommending training to the police department, and assisting residents with filing complaints about discrimination. If elected to city council, I want to continue to build trust between the public and the police department. Affordable housing is an issue that affects many of us. When more than 30% of our income is spent on housing costs, less money's left for groceries, healthcare, and other necessities. We need to increase the supply of affordable housing, as well as support projects designed to improve rental properties. The Gather Iowa Project is an opportunity to provide affordable housing for our residents. Feedback that I've heard from the community is that city council should listen to public comments and be transparent. We need to protect our priorities and have people be part of the decision-making. I will listen to the concerns of all Corleville residents and work to get your questions answered. I hope I can earn your vote on November 4th.
Thank you.
Hi, Nguyen. First, I would like to thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding tonight's forum, and thank you to everyone joining here today in person and online. My name is Hi Nguyen, and I have lived here in Corleville for the last 24 years. I love the city. I love its people, its diversity, and the center of community that make Corleville home. And that is why my husband and I chose to raise our family here, and why I am so deeply invested in its future. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to be part of the solution, working to make Corleville a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place for everyday people. Life is really hard right now. Many of our neighbors are struggling and afraid, and threats and challenges are coming from every direction, impacting not just the most vulnerable, but everyday families. That is why I'm asking for your continued trust to be your voice at the decision-making table. I promise to listen with an open mind, be accessible, and lead with compassion and integrity, ensuring every decision benefit everyday Corleville residents.
Thank you. And now we're gonna hear from Mike Knutson on the screen. We hope.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Perfect. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. First, about me personally, I've lived in Corleville over 25 years, and my wife Beth and I raised our two daughters here. I'm a physician-scientist, currently medical director of the Iowa Healthcare Blood Bank and Donor Center. I'm an avid recreational commuter-biker and benefit from the great trails in Corleville, and I will continue to support the expansion and maintenance of the trails and parks within the city. About my experience with Corleville. In addition to my last four years on council, I have nearly 20 years of experience as a volunteer for Corleville, including former member of the Board of Adjustment, the Corleville Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Parks and Recreation. Sustainability is a high priority for me, and I'm an avid recycler and also compost as much material as possible. I advocated for the community garden and for single-stream recycling, which was implemented during my first term in office. During my first term, I committed my councilmember salary to the Corleville Food Pantry, houses in the homes, neighbors helping neighbors, and will continue with this commitment if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected. Some of my perspectives. I believe in smart, environmentally-conscious growth. I support a strong public transportation system that includes bus system and pedestrian-friendly sidewalks and trails. I supported the Gather Iowa Project near Walgreens. I've supported numerous affordable housing initiatives such as the Coral North Apartments and will continue to advocate for affordable housing. I'm a strong supporter of all types of diversity, racial, economic, and secular orientation. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the Corleville City Council, I make the following commitments. I will continue to listen to all perspectives. I promise to use data-driven decision-making, something I do every day at my work. I promise my actions and votes will factor in the long-term effects any policies have on the environment and on the disadvantage. And I promise to use my role on council to support continued economic and growth in Corleville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marshall Pope.
Thank you. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for strengthening our democracy and really championing it. And I want to make a shout-out to the maintainers of corleville.org, because it's an excellent webpage, with an excellent, you know, well-organized and has a lot of information. My name is Robert Marshall Pope. I'm a candidate for city council. I'm an analytical biochemist directing complex research projects for the last 35 years. These projects use machine language and AI in large data sets that are used for clinical I recently retired, and I have concerns about Corleville's future too. So, I also have concerns about federal issues that are affecting Iowa and how those issues will be manifested right here in our own town. My wife and I have been in Corleville for 16 wonderful years. Our kids attended West High. In short, we love and we've adopted Corleville and the community. I'm running because we face both long-term challenges like affordable housing and livable wages, and urgent ones tied to how the federal government is changing. Cities matter now more than ever. We need to protect vulnerable populations like never before. We need to strengthen our social safety nets, come out through each other and support each other, maintain our utilities, and provide clean air and water. All this requires councilmembers who think through very complex problems very carefully, can manage competing priorities and gather community input, and aren't afraid of doing the detailed work. That's why I bring deep experience in solving hard problems systematically, and understanding new technologies, and a commitment to this community, and I'd appreciate your vote on November 4th.
Thank you. Next up, Derek Schroeder.
I'm Derek Schroeder.
Schroeder, pardon me.
I'm a local Realtor here in the Iowa City area at LKR. My wife and I and our two kids have lived in Corleville since 2020. We lived in Iowa City for 11 years before that, and I went to the University of Iowa. One of the primary reasons why I'm running for city council is our water situation. We definitely need to figure out a way for it to get better. It's always an issue when I work with clients and their homes and they're having to replace their water heaters and their knobs and everything like that, probably every three to five years. I think you all know what I'm talking about. When we lived in Iowa City, it wasn't really much of an issue. We had pretty clean water, and I think our water heater lasted probably about 20 years before we even moved into the house. So, that's one of the things that I would like to focus on. And as a Realtor, I work with a lot of people that kind of our main priority is affordable housing, and I know that that's a real issue here. I work with a company called Astro Commons. They're trying to work on some big things in our area and want to see some things change, especially on Fifth and Second, so.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jennifer Struthers.
Hi, I'm Jennifer, most people call me Jenny, Struthers. First, I want to thank the League for hosting this event. It's very nice to get to see everybody in the same room and hear everybody's thoughts on the same issues. I also want to thank everybody who showed up here tonight, or is watching online, or even watching later when it's recorded, thank you for getting educated on all these candidates. I grew up on the west side of Iowa City. I graduated from West High, and I earned my BBA in marketing and finance, and then went on to earn a law degree and MBA, all from the University of Iowa, so spent a long time on that campus. After practicing law in Chicago and St. Louis, I returned home to Corleville in 2007 and continued working part-time with Chocor in Corleville. Though I'm still a licensed attorney, I have not actively practiced law in the last few years. I've spent my recent years focusing on raising my family and serving our schools and communities. For the continuous past 13 years, I've served on the executive PTO boards for Wickham, Northwest, and West High. I'm actually currently still on the executive board of the West High PSTO. I've led a Girl Scout troop, I volunteered for Cub Scouts, and helped organize many school and community events. Corleville is a wonderful place to raise a family. Our parks, trails, community spaces, and libraries, and venues like Extreme Arena and the Center for Performing Arts make our city of only 22,000 truly special. These achievements reflect strong forward-thinking leadership. I want to continue that progress, supporting development in business while also addressing pressing challenges that come with responsible growth. I would be honored to earn your vote on November 4th. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny. And now we'll hear from the mayoral candidates. First, Lori Goodrich.
Thank you, good evening. Corleville's been home to my family for many years, and this community has given so much to us that I want to give back. I want to make sure it remains a place where everyone, seniors, young families, students, and longtime residents can thrive. It has been an honor to serve three terms in city council, and I've seen neighbors support one another, schools, churches, and service groups strengthen our bonds, and local businesses and nonprofits create opportunities that ripple through the community. I'm proud of our city staff and council, enhance our quality of life through arts, our library, recreation, sporting events, and year-round celebrations. These all make Corleville vibrant. As your mayor, I will work alongside you to protect essential services, expand opportunities, and guide welcoming, sustainable development for generations to come. Together, we can honor what makes Corleville special and build even brighter future for our children, our neighbors, and everyone who calls this community home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ryan Swanka.
I just want to start with a thanks to the League of Women Voters hosting this event, all of you for coming out and engaging in local politics, and of course, anyone viewing either online or the recording later. I believe public engagement is vital to the health of our city. That's why it's one of the pillars of my campaign. I believe with more participation, with more community involvement, we will see greater and more equitable outcomes throughout Corleville. For those that don't know me, I'm Ryan Swanka. I'm a trainer at a local software company. I've lived in Johnson County my whole life, lived in Corleville the past 10 years, and my wife and I volunteer with Big Brothers Big Sisters, where we've been matched for just almost five years with our little. I'm new to politics, or at least to running for a local office, and I'm finding that we are living in increasingly unstable times. Our state and federal government are in lockstep in dissolving a lot of the institutions and protections that we've had, whether these be, you know, labor, environmental, or constitutional protections. Many institutions that we could once rely on for funding or support may soon not be around or in any shape to help us. That may come across as fear-mongering. I hope I'm wrong. I hope that we can rebuild and elevate civil service and services. But at the end of the day, when we face instability like this, we need to rely on one another. It's part of why I say we need a more inclusive and responsive government. We need a more proactive government. We have many issues affecting our community, and we need a council and mayor that are not afraid to get creative, to get into the weeds on the issues, and not just be a rubber stamp for any private interests. The success of our community relies on good long-term investments, relies on a good vision, and I hope that with everyone's help, we will be able to do so-
Thank you, Ryan.
...and that's the government I want to contribute to.
Okay, we've had the opening statements, and now we're gonna have the first question, which is from the League. "In September, the Corleville City Council approved the installation of ALPR, Automatic License Plate Readers, by the Flock Safety System. The cameras are designed to give law enforcement agencies alerts when a vehicle identified through an amber or silver alert issued to help authorities find missing children or adults is detected. The cameras save license plate numbers and other physical information about vehicles The cameras save license plate numbers and other physical information about vehicles that pass by in the Flock data system. These cameras are not the same as speed detection cameras. Discussion about the plan to add the cameras was contentious with hours of public comment from residents expressing concerns about privacy and the use of data collected from the cameras. Please explain your position on the use of these cameras in Corville. And we will start with Deborah.
Well, I do support the use of the cameras in Corville because they are a major part of the amber alert, and I feel that the police deserve all of the help they can get. It is, there are cameras everywhere now. I know the mall has them and Lowe's has them to prevent retail theft, so it's not like you're not on camera. And recently, there was a child who was lost and they had a drone who found him based on heat sensitivity, which is different than the cameras, but there are, there are electronics everywhere, and your phone is always telling people where you are.
Next, we'll go to Kathy.
Thank you. I don't have a particular problem with automated license plate readers per se. However, the company Flock is extremely questionable. Right now, federal and state government are targeting immigrants and transgender youth and adults. In Evanston, Illinois, Flock allowed ICE to access cameras against their state laws. We do not want out-of-state law enforcement agencies searching our Flock database to assist I feel like there are uses for the cameras in terms of if a child is abducted or a car is stolen. I feel like that would allow law enforcement to catch the car a little bit easier. However, I want policies in place to hold the police department accountable for who can access the data and also be transparent regarding how the data is used.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you so much for the question. You know, I have been working on this issue for the last three, four months as, as a, you know, as a sitting city councillor, and my stand on this issue is that I do not believe that at this point, the camera is useful for the city of Corville. Because first of all, the right to privacy is important to me, to every single person that call Corville home. Second of all, I don't trust the third party who collecting and retaining our data, and we need stronger safeguard if we continue to look into installing these camera into our community. I sent an op-ed about what my stand on this issue to local media, and I will publish that op-ed on social media soon, so you can read more in detail about that. And at any time if you have questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, hi. Mike?
Yeah, thank you very much. As I just said, we've been working on this for three or four months, and I feel like I've listened to the community comments on this and have learned a lot from them. I feel like my record's pretty clear on this from our meetings. The timing is very poor for this system because of what's going on at the federal and the state level. It certainly serves a useful purpose for our police, and I understand why our police chief advocated for it and can see his perspective, but again, the timing is very bad, and the potential for abuse here, I think, is very high by our, in particular, our federal government. So that's why I came out against it ultimately. It was a tough choice, and now I'm advocating for a very strict policy in terms of how it can be used. Some of our, some, we've gotten some good feedback on what we can do to, to limit the threat and who can have this data, and we'll continue to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Marshall?
Okay, thanks. The Flock contract, I believe, exemplifies the wrong way for Corville to make technology decisions. Was involved in some of my earlier attendances to the Corville Council, and it's how I got to know the Corville Council, and, but it also has the real teeth in it, so it drew me in. The request was buried on a single budget line and voted in April without knowing, the city council didn't know that it had, the contract had already been signed in February. The public learned of that particular contract in June after somebody filed the Freedom of Information Act and then brought it to the council, where nobody had seen it. Now we're locked into a surveillance system where our data goes to a private company on one of the coasts, and the naval intelligence system have full access to Flock's Nova platform, and so does the Department of Justice, Homeland Security, and the Navy, and, yeah. And the Flock's Nova platform combines multiple media profiles, right, and natural language services, so, okay.
Thank you. Derek?
So, I've, I've definitely heard both sides of this argument. It's been a hot-button topic over the last few months. I definitely would like to learn more about what, what it's being used for on that level. I don't think it needs to be privatized. I think we could do something more here, but part of what I would like to look into is if, if we could try to figure out a way to compromise, because I think this is a, it's a good tool to have. Being a father and of two kids, I, I understand those concerns. I've also had a grandma that, you know, went missing for a very short time and then was, was found later kind of walking on a gravel road and, and things like that. So I understand those concerns, but I also understand a lot of the concerns from, from people worried about, you know, the, kind of the, sorry, I'll, yeah, I'll stop.
Jenny?
Thank you. Sorry. I came into the Flock discussion originally with the view that if the Corville Police thinks this is a helpful tool, we should support them. I then sat through a couple city council meetings and, and I heard concerns and fears of, of some residents and made me take some pause. I did some more research and I also read testimonials of, you know, really great stories of how they can be helpful, silver alerts, amber alerts right here in Iowa of where they have helped people. So I also looked at where the cameras were going to be placed. There are three very reasonable and very public places that the police would like to put them in Corville. After hearing from the Flock representative at the city council meeting, I questioned whether our contract could be negotiated and tailored to what we wanted rather than a standard boilerplate agreement. It was confirmed that each contract meeting between Flock and the municipality is unique, so my stance would be to allow these cameras in the three places that have been identified, but to very narrowly tailor the contract and a policy, but under the contract, we would have legal recourse if they are violated.
Thank you, Jennifer. Lori?
Thank you, Jennifer, for your comments.
Oh, we're, you're, you will. It's rotating. Lori, go ahead.
Start. All right, thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments. I, and I know we don't, I just need to tell what I have done so far. I want to make clear that the city council heard four times, two times of budgeting sessions in January about, we heard about Flock. We had a work session, we had a video, and we also had discussion and then a vote later in April. So we did have a number of different times to hear and understand about Flock. Thank you. We, you know, we want to work with surrounding communities and the county, and we, I voted yes, and I am very much in favor of our policy being a very strong policy. Thank you.
Ryan?
If you've been to any of the previous sessions, you know that I am absolutely opposed to AI surveillance within a black box system that a third profit-driven company has access to. You may have seen recently on the news that Flock is also now partnering with Amazon Ring Cameras. This is a company that is actively building profiles to sell that data to other parties. There's not a whole lot else to say other than their success rate is remarkably low. When first presented with this and with many other issues, I like to frame everything within, what is the problem we are trying to solve and how does this actually accomplish that? And so far, to date, through all the research, all the community comments that we've had, our current website showing almost 100,000 hits already within this month for the cameras that are currently up, it's not solving anything.
Katie, you're up.
Sorry for jumping the gun.
No problem, no problem.
Similar to what Ryan said, if, if people have been attending the city council meetings or watching them later online, you'll know that I've been opposed to the Flock cameras and have been actively saying so during city council meetings since June. As stated in most of my comments, these systems definitely affect and impact marginalized communities greater than any other community. Just like any of our systems, they're only as great as what data goes into them, what regulations go around them. So, I was extremely disappointed when they voted to keep the contract, and now I am one of the people who is pushing to have as strict of, I would actually like an ordinance versus a policy, but as strict of regulations as we can around the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to questions from the audience, and I'm going to combine a couple here. As a city council member, what would you do to increase the amount of low-income housing and permanent supportive housing in Corville? And along with that, would you support privately-owned or Corville-owned affordable housing? And we will start with Kathy.
So, yes, we do have an affordable housing problem here in Corville. I think with the Gather Iowa Project, that will add more units. They have thirty-four units right now designated for affordable housing, so I'm hoping we can utilize that. There are also mobile home parks that we can expand. Those are privately-owned, not city-owned. I don't believe the city has any that they own currently in terms of affordable housing. I feel like permanent supportive housing, I know that's what Iowa City is working on. Their homeless population, I think, is far greater than Corville's, and there are resources in Iowa City like shelter house that people, that's overflowed, and there aren't enough places for people right now. So, I'm not aware right now of a city having any supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you so much. You know, the, the low-income housing and permanent supportive housing is not a unique to Corville issue. It is a nationwide issue, and I think, you know, in, in my lifetime and your lifetime, we're not going to solve that issue permanently, but if we continue to work together and identify where, you know, opportunity where we can continue to work on bringing in more unit, working with developer, having funding in the city in order to purchase land or houses that need rehab, so that we can continue to build and rehab one house or one unit at a time to add into the low-income housing and permanent supportive housing. Corville is landlocked, so it's a little tricky. We don't have land to build out, but we can certainly build up and we can continue to look at how we can expand the number of unit in, you know, a certain area. So, I will continue to work to support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, thank you. This has been a very, very important issue for me, as I said in my opening statement. We've accomplished quite a bit in the last four years. Coral North Apartments, Gather Iowa Project, I really fought to make sure there's an affordable component to that, because the city's going to be making a big investment in that property, and it's going to be very big for the city. We need to continue to do that, a wide variety of other projects. We do support shelter house, certainly advocate for that as well, continue to do that. Do I think we should own housing? That wouldn't be my, my first approach, I don't think. I'd rather work with private developers, maybe purchase it, redevelop the property, and then make sure that it's given, given to people in an affordable manner, and we've done a little bit of that. Certainly would like to expand on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marshall?
Sixty percent of Johnson County renters in two- and three-bedroom units are cost burden relative to market house, market price for housing. That means they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing and our living paycheck to paycheck. My kind of idea for housing would be something that is collaboration between corporations who realize they're, who could contribute to housing initially, and also the city bringing up those housings. So, what would happen was the corporations would, would want to have their own, they'd understand housing instability is detrimental to them and detrimental to, and therefore they would want to be in, in touch with the, with the people in housing. So they'd get not only some credits what, from the university or large employers right here, they'd also get the chance to earn money and to save money because they'd have infrastructure that is actually amenities like childcare.
Okay, thank you. Derek?
Yeah, obviously, there's a lot of creative ways that we could get into certain things with, with interest rate and things like that and buy downs and things that the city and even the county could sort of co-op with, with some of the private organizations that are working on this issue. And I, I definitely think there's, there's some conversations to be had about what we can do with that. But as of right now, I, I think it's getting better, and I know that, you know, as, as a Realtor, we, we want to see people own homes, and that's kind of like the, you know, our main focus. And so with, with rents continuing to go up in this area, and it's, it's mostly because of the university, I think, I think if there's a way that we can work together to work on some of that, getting better interest rates for those tenants is, would be one way.
Okay, thank you. Jenny?
Well, as I've spoken with several Corville residents over the last few months, this topic has been brought up several times. I think we all agree that affordable housing is a current issue in the community and should be addressed. I agree with, with Hi's comments earlier is that it's a complicated issue. There's no simple solutions. If there were, we would have it solved already. So, my first thought is we need to define, kind of really define the problems before we can find the solutions. We need to really talk to the people that this affects and look at things of what we're trying to do. Are we trying to attract new residents of Corville with affordable housing? Are we trying to help our current residents with better housing? So I think there's things we could do. I think we need to have this in our mind every time we go forward with development, and I think Gather Iowa is a great example of this, of having thirty-four units for affordable housing in the, in the plans.
Thank you. Lori?
Thank you. I would like to say that there are past city council members in our audience tonight who would agree with me that we have worked very hard on affordable housing, and we did a document that shows all the different kind of housing, owner occupied, Habitat for Humanity, Single Family Construction, Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, Shelter House, all the different ways, senior living, all the different ways that we have been working on this. Thank you. Thirty seconds. I will say that one of the big I will say that one of the big ways, let's see, from young families to seniors and first-time buyers and longtime residents, we need healthy mix of housing styles that work for everyone. And it's important to care for the established neighborhoods, for maintaining infrastructure and supporting programs that help family update and improve their homes, which we do. We have programs for that. We have affordable and accessible housing benefits for everyone with seniors leaving their homes and then new families being able to, to live in their homes as seniors go to new senior residents. Thanks.
Ryan?
Thank you. So yeah, as stated before, we have many cost-burdened households in Corralville. A fair market, one-bedroom is almost $1,000 in Corralville. There are a couple solutions that we can work towards. One, relying more on the private development side is addressing missing-middle housing. So that's adjusting the zoning to allow for developers to build more missing-middle units. Things like a stacked triplex, cottage courts, row homes, town homes, having a greater density within the community, while also fighting the urge to expand to every inch of land with more car-dependent sprawl. The other aspect would be something like permanent supportive housing, and I would support public housing. So having city-managed, low-income housing that isn't just relegated to the outskirts of town, or put next to some railroad tracks, or anywhere that other people might not want to live.
Thank you. Ryan? Katie?
Um, so about 50% of the renters in Corralville spend 30% to 50% of their monthly income on rent. And so I think in order to grow available affordable housing, I would propose that we set aside some of our general fund every year that could go to an affordable housing fund versus always relying on, on grants, so something that we plan ahead for. And also utilizing underutilized spaces that are owned currently by the city, whether that be like commercial spaces or just land, utilizing it even in the short term for supportive housing.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the next question. How will you work to protect marginalized members of our community? And we are going to start with Hi.
Thank you. You notice?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, Deb. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, I do not support the, the city owning housing and getting into the rental business. One thing is, they're not equipped to do that. And a second thing, if the city owns it, then it's off the tax rolls, which just compounds the problem. So I would be in favor of the city giving grants, working with private companies, and the local option sales tax will create a stream of revenue that the city can use for affordable housing if they choose.
Thank you, and my apologies again. Okay, now, how will you work to protect marginalized members of our community? Hi?
Thank you. You know, that is one of the things that we should always, always continue to work on, because the most marginalized and the most vulnerable community need all of our protection. How to do that? We need to strengthen our social services, because oftentimes, that is the safety net that our most vulnerable community member turn to. And we know that the threat from the state and federal government really threaten that safety net. So as a community, we need to come together to strengthen our social services. As the city, we need to allocate more funding for that. We need to advocate for their rights as well, whether they are here, you know, legally or illegally. It is not our to judge. If they are here, they are our community member. And we have to do everything in our power to give them the right to exist here, to live here, to be seen, to be heard, and to be welcome here. So, we just have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, thank you for that very important question. We've had a couple of votes on this recently, and I advocated and, and supported the Human Rights Protection Resolution, which came before the council, I think, just a couple of weeks ago. Really appreciate the community advocating for that, and, and Mayor Foster for bringing that to, to our vote. In crafting the language for the local option sales tax issue, we wanted to make sure that this money could be used for social services. And I agree with Hi that this is a critical aspect of supporting this community, and, and this will, this will allow us to continue to expand our support with, with, with those types of social services that are critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall?
Well, I believe that we do want to follow the lead set by Gather Iowa and the Corralville North Apartment Projects. When we set up development initiatives, we need to require the proportional number of affordable units. We need workforce houses for nurses, teachers, and service workers who keep Corralville running. We need to understand, and these are people that actually want to, uh, we give them a leg up because they want to set roots down in the community. So, employers are stakeholders as well in this partnership, and they, because they want their valuable employees to stay around. So if the employers recruit a submarket, at submarket wages, can offer subsidies, uh, the city can offer subsidies, as long as the employers agree over time to keep market, their wages going up to market scale, so they can eventually get out of the subsidized market housing and get into the market-priced housing itself. And they, the amenities that we provide, like childcare and other things, will provide them the chance to save $800 a month in addition to what their, their job gives them.
Thank you, Marshall. Derek?
Yeah, could I get clarification on that question? Because I got confused there.
Yep. How will you work to protect marginalized members of our community?
Well, yeah, I would, I would say, kind of our goal would be to protect everybody in our community. Sorry, there's a bunch of ants right there. Yeah, I mean, we should be willing and able to do everything that we can to protect all of you. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue there. We should, 30 seconds. We should, yeah, work to protect everybody, whether or not it's, you know, you're out and about, day or night, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thanks. Well, I want everyone, every resident of Corralville to feel her safe and, and proud to live in Corralville, proud of our government. I want to, um, continue the city to help. We have some very, very wonderful resources in this community, two of which, which I recently toured, are, is our food pantry, which is amazing, and also Houses and Homes. And we do provide some financial support to both of those organizations, which I would can, want to continue to do, to help their great work in our community. I would want to continue to uphold our ordinance that no one will be discriminated against by any person. And I think that we need to continue to do whatever we need to do to make sure that, that that happens. And also, I think we need to be open and willing to listen to all residents about concerns that we may not realize people have, and work hard to help with any issues that residents in this city are facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Lori?
Thank you. I'm a big proponent of volunteerism and philanthropy, and I believe that our city has many, many wonderful people who are giving their all to help their neighbors and to protect marginalized, vulnerable people. We support, the, Corralville supports the food pantry strongly, and also at the library, we have English language classes, along with many other opportunities there for computer help and so on. And our bus system also is another way that we support anyone and everyone. We have a person that we pay half of her responsibilities for teaching people how to ride the bus. So if any of you want to know how to ride the bus, just call our bus service system, and they will send this wonderful person to help you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Ryan?
So I supported, I'm glad that Corralville has passed the Equal Protections Resolution, helping some of our marginalized communities that way, by making sure that, that is a part of our, you know, the makeup of our city, how we have everything that we want to run. I'd agree that we need to strengthen our social services. I'd say that as we grow and as we build up and work towards, you know, fixing things like affordable housing, that we take care to reduce or eliminate displacement, especially of housing of our marginalized communities, their restaurants, their businesses, and making sure that, as a city, regardless of any state or federal, I guess, muddling, that the human rights of all of our citizens, neighbors, and guests are respected.
Thank you. Katie?
Um, well, I've been an active member of the Trans Advisory Committee of Johnson County for about a year now, and so I was part of the group that worked to get the Equal Protections Resolution brought forward and passed. And I would like to support similar measures for other marginalized communities, such as adopting a resolution that was presented at the Joint Entities Meeting about adopting a Fourth Amendment workplace protections for our immigrant neighbors and friends. So I would support something like that in order to protect them, and then increasing services, especially access to healthcare, as many of our folks are losing that currently.
Thank you. Debra?
Okay, well, I think the Corralville-Iowa City area is probably the most welcoming in the state of Iowa. And I know the Corralville Public Library has a part-time employee whose job it is to help immigrants or people new to the community learn to navigate the bus system and how to find resources. So I think that private and public resources can combine to do this, to help them, help inform people of the resources available to them, and facilitate their use.
Thank you. Kathy?
So, I was on the Community Pacing Advisory Board for four years, we, where we analyzed traffic, traffic stop data for discrimination. So that's been like, um, a topic that's really important for me, to teach the police department about different ways that unconscious bias or just cultural awareness can affect how they stop people in the city. Right now, the state and federal government are threatening marginalized people everywhere. You know, our immigrant community with ICE, our transgender community, the state just removed civil rights from, for gender identity in February. So I'm really glad that we did pass that resolution, protecting transgender people that live here. Everybody should be welcome. Social services are hugely important, so supporting the food pantry, people's SNAP benefits are going away soon, because the federal government is too busy, I don't want to get into that. So, um, we need to stick together, and we are a community, and we need to support each other and do whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, changing the topic a little bit. Do you support the right of workers to organize and bargain collectively? That is, unionize. And will you ensure the city's bargaining representatives negotiate in good faith on a full range of topics important to employees and the community? And we will start with Mike.
Yes, thank you very much. As, as many of you may know, I, I feel like our city employees, the vast majority are represented by, by unions, and, and I feel like we've done a very good job negotiating with them in good faith. Certainly want to encourage folks to join unions, and, um, you know, I, I think unions are critical for our country, and would, would support doing anything I can to kind of get them back to where they were maybe 30 or 40 years ago, if possible. And certainly within the city, and our employees there, we'll, we'll continue to work with, with, with all the unions that we currently do. So, I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marshall?
Yes, my mother's entire working life was in the federal government, working as a CPA, and she, I always maintained a position with the union. And even when she was able to emerge into a more executive level, she kept her credentials in the union. And so I, I do believe that people should be able to organize, and I also think that when negotiations are taking place, that administrators should be upfront and honest of what they're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Derek?
Yeah, I think unions can be, can definitely be a good thing. It, it keeps, keeps employers in check sometimes. My wife's a part of a union as a nurse practitioner. Yeah, and I think it should be our job to make sure that, that those negotiations go, go well. Obviously, like, we, we work to compromise and, and things like that, and we want to see both sides kind of come together, so.
Okay. Jenny? I'm so sorry. Could you, could you read the entire question to me again? Sure. Do you support the right of workers to organize and bargain collectively? That is, you, you unionize. And, excuse me, will you ensure the city's bargaining representatives negotiate in good faith on a full range of topics important to employees and the community?
Um, so, so yes. I mean, in the history of the United States, um, unionization has played a, a very important role. Uh, so, so yes, I think if, I, I would support the right if workers wanted to go that route, and they wanted to unionize. And I always think we should be going in full faith and, and honesty in working with any employees. We have, the city of Corralville has an amazing employees. I've met many of them through the last few months. And, you know, I would hope that our city is treating them very well, because they're doing a great job for all of us. But if that was something that they wanted to do, to unionize, I would, I would support it, and I would always try to be upfront and honest in, in all my dealings, so.
Okay. Lori?
Yes, I will continue to support the unions in the city of Corralville.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Yep, unequivocally, yes. I support the working class, unions, tenants' rights. As a working-class city, I assure almost everyone in this room is working class. It's imperative that our rights to organize and demand better of our bosses and landlords be protected. As mayor, that would extend down to all of the employees of the city. My grandfather, my stepdad, my uncle, they were all ironworkers, my grandfather for over 40 years. So it's been, instilled in me from a very young age that we have so many things in this country, in the city, because of unions, it is imperative that we support them and that we allow those to continue to flourish. I would also support tenants' unions, should the tenants of Corralville decide to unionize. I think it is important that, that they have that power as well.
Katie?
I also support unions and the right to I also support unions and the right to unionize. And I think it's probably our job as far as city councilors, when it comes to city staff negotiating, that I think we should be removing barriers in order to make it easier for those to unionize. And, and gonna kind of jump on the bandwagon of Ryan, I do think that we need a tenants' union as well. Like I mentioned earlier, 50% of renters are paying 30 to 50% of their income. So I think that they definitely should unionize. And my mother, while she was alive, was a teacher and was a proud union member and definitely raised me to be one as well.
Thank you. Debra?
Well, I don't know that much about unions, so I would have to investigate before making a final decision. But my brother-in-law is an ironworker union and my nephew was a negotiator for his union. So I do support people who want to unionize.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
So generally, when people are looking to unionize, it's because there's a huge wage gap between like corporate owners and the employees. And I definitely support unionizing, you know, negotiating for higher salaries and benefits. Feel like if you're doing a good job for a company and the top person is making all the money, that's just not fair. So definitely I support fair wages, collective bargaining, especially for our city employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you. My answer to the, to that question is yes and yes. You know, I do strongly believe that workers should have the right to organize and to get unionized, to be represented better. You know, they should get fair wage and they should have equal protection and they should have the right to keep, being kept from being exploited. I have stand with worker before, fighting for their right, you know, fighting for them to have the right to get paid what they promised and not living in terrible condition where they don't have running water, where they don't have food, where they don't even have the phone to call their family. And I do support the right for people to ask for better, you know, whether it's accommodation when it comes to translation, accommodation, you know, when it comes to how to organize. So my answer is yes and yes.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to have to move to our last question, and I'm sorry that there's a number of questions that have been asked by the audience we're not going to have time to get to, but please do feel free to contact the candidates yourself personally, either at the end of the forum or otherwise. I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you. So, last question. It's about money. Based on possible and probably probable property tax reform suggested by the state that would impact Corleville tax revenues, how would you approach the city budget? Is there any part of the budget that you would, that's currently that you would eliminate? Or what would you support in the budget? And we're going to start with Marshall.
Well, I think that the budget is a, is an issue that is quite complicated, but you can dig into it and I'm really proud that it, it's accessible on corleville.org. And one of the things I've noticed that we have, that a 2024 external audit, a external audit of the 2024 budget noted that there were several line items that actually hadn't been passed through council back then. And we've just talked about FLOC, a line item that hasn't passed through council. And so what I would like to do is set up, and the 2024, or our reply to the 2024 audit was that we'll put places, we'll fix that, put things in place to fix it. And what I would like to do is actually put things in place to fix it using the agile method, which is a way of managing projects, but at the stage gates, you decide where they're not to throw more money at something, right? You show your milestone, you, you show what you've accomplished and you communicate it, and then people decide where they throw more money. That stage gate should report directly in to our, to our dashboards.
Thank you, Marshall. Sorry to cut you off. Derek?
Yeah. Obviously, I mentioned this when I, when I first spoke, but I would, I would like to take a look at the budget and try to figure out how we can kind of manage the, the water situation and what it would take and how long it would take for us to have better quality of water in the city of Corleville. And if that, if that were to, you know, if we were to talk to Iowa City and sort of group with them, because obviously they've done that, and maybe look to some of the other cities around and see if we could work in a cooperative and, and with Johnson County itself. That would be my primary focus would be to try to figure out a way to, to fix that issue, so.
Jenny?
Well, yes, the budget is very complicated and we could talk about this for the rest of the night and tomorrow and the next day. So I'm going to read to you guys an answer that I had put together to try to stay within the one minute, and this was, if the city were faced with budget cuts, how would you handle, which is best, basically the same thing. Anytime there needs to be a cut to the budget, I believe you need to look at the entire budget. If there's a revenue shortfall, city looks at ways it could generate revenue to see if there's another, any way to increase these funds or relatively simple ways to reduce expenses associated with this stream of income. All expenses need to be reviewed as groups. First, there are expenses that must be incurred. These are essential services. We cannot cut these. These will likely not be a place where we can save. Next are expenses related to programs, projects, and services that are great for the community but could have cuts with minimal amount of harm. I'd also look to see if there's any projects that could be delayed a bit until we could find some more revenue. And lastly, I would look at the assets owned by the city that generate revenue but are not carrying their weight, and then we could determine whether we need to expend those assets.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Laura?
My turn. We have quality water because of deep wells. The water is pure, but we do have hard water. And I just wanted to state that. Budget cuts are very, never easy and I would not want to see any services, staff, or funding reduced. As mayor, I will work to produce the essential services our residents depend on and value every day. At the same time, I will champion new business development and support the growth of existing businesses, create good-paying jobs that keep Corleville's tax base strong and thriving.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, so in light of, if there were some sort of budget shortfall, we do have on the ballot this November, the local option sales tax. That would give us some local control or some funding. So I would like to see that defined into percentages that would allow us to better allocate for, you know, budget shortfalls where we need to prioritize. And I would start with my priority being that where so many other issues are focused and built around is that poverty causes these issues. Changing over to, to build more public supportive housing, having a new community vision and more partnerships with our neighboring communities, since we are so closely integrated, can maybe help us shore up some of those shortfalls and build a more robust and interconnected community just across the corridor.
Thank you.
So if we needed to, if there was a reason to cut the budget, like Ryan said, I want to mention lost because this is the one option to have some local funding that we would have control over. It might help cover some gaps in the meantime. But I think that we need to go to the community and get more community input on what our community's needs are and what their values are so that we can center those needs and services. And maybe looking at moving things from, it could mean delaying or eliminating development in order to meet the needs of the local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Debra?
Well, Corleville has been very frugal in their spending, balancing their investments against the return it will provide. And I think the local option sales tax will help eliminate budget cuts and not have to increase property taxes.
Kathy?
So if we did have to make that tough decision to cut the budget, definitely we would protect social services, city employees. I guess we'd have to go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb to see what extras we could cut that don't harm our residents or that align with our priorities. Kind of like if you had to do repairs in your home and you have a budget, you kind of have to decide what are you going to take care of now versus what you're going to put off for next year or a couple of years later. We just need to think about our priorities and involve the community and cause no harm, first of all. So that's it.
Hi.
Thank you. You know, I, as a sitting counselor, I actually have to work through this budget cut before, not just once, a couple of times. And it's not the fun thing to do. I always advocate for, if there is a budget cut, I always advocate for not cutting staff because they are the backbone of everything that is happening in our city. They keep our city running. And so if we cut staff, then that means that it will impact the quality of life for Corleville resident. Always encourage staff to look for additional funding. You know, state and federal policy make it really hard for local government to support their resident. And I would say the local option sales tax is, will be one of the best thing that happened for our community because it will help capturing revenue from out of town, visitor who come here to eat, to shop, to play. And that will allow us some money to be able to balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Thank you. As I just alluded to, this is not a theoretical question. We've been dealing with this over the last couple of years in my time on council, and it's a critical issue. And certainly one, several people have mentioned lost, and it's certainly one of the reasons why I advocated to put lost on the ballot. And it is critical for our community moving forward to, to support this, in my opinion. So, so that can help with budgets. If, if despite that, we have challenges, you know, not cutting staff, I completely agree with that. Limiting, limiting growth, you know, how much we increase budgets will, will help, as well as delaying capital investments, as has been suggested. And just working with, with our staff and, and addressing, and looking at these approaches with that philosophy in mind, I think is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was our final question. We're now going to go on to the closing statements of each of the candidates. You have two minutes each. And Ryan, we're going to start with you.
Well, the election is a week and several hours away, so I hope you've all made a plan. If you've already voted, thanks for coming out anyway, regardless. I would just like to, to end on a statement here that, you know, pop culture likes to focus a lot on heroes and on individuals. You see this in, you know, biopictures all the time where they take many people, condense them down into one character. The reality is, is that collective action is what has gotten us our rights, our liberties, and has built every city in America. We're all in this together and nobody knows everything. Nobody on this table here knows everything. And there's a lot that I don't know. But I intend to hit the ground running and fight for what our community needs and to listen to the community and fight for those needs. I hope that you will all entrust me to be your mayor. As I like to say, a better city is possible and as an engaged community, we can get the job done. Now, it's hard to fit all of the answers to these very great questions within a minute, so I would just encourage you to reach out to me, catch me afterwards, send me an email, and make sure that we are engaging with one another and that I can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, you're next.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to speak about Corleville and the great people. Thank you to Karen Franken and Deanne Muir and the League of City Voters and League of Women Voters, excuse me, and our city communication specialist, John Hines. We should all give kudos to him. Yes. I'll give my minute to him. I also want to thank each of the candidates for stepping forward to serve and to all of you in the audience for your engagement and dedication to local government. Being Corleville's next mayor means being a servant leader for the community that truly cares about friends, families, and our shared future. Corleville is a diverse, compassionate city with a small-town feel. I take great pride in the organization and policies that make our city welcoming and safe, and that supports sustainable growth and economic opportunity. Corleville's a special place and with your support, we can continue to honor what makes it great. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Struthers?
I wasn't expecting that rotation. Okay. I, I'm proud to be a Corleville resident and I believe our city's leaders have done an excellent job, especially in developing the Ira River Landing area. I hope to build on this legacy with common sense and fiscally responsible plans that support Corleville's continued growth and prosperity. As we grow, we'll face challenges, but I'm confident we can meet them with the same forward-thinking approach that's guided us so far. As we discussed, a pressing issue that's been brought up by many is the lack of affordable housing. I believe by encouraging mixed-use development, we can expand affordable housing options and with all future development, we can keep in mind the goal of adding even more housing options. I also think we could look into some incentives and maybe getting current properties up to a higher, higher living standards. The city should also continue to financially support our library, community spaces, and local organizations like the Corleville Food Pantry and Houses into Home that do such great work for our community. I will remain open-minded and committed to listening to all the ideas that benefit all of our residents. Even as we've developed, Corleville has preserved its small-town spirit and strong sense of community. Our trails, parks, libraries, arts programs, festivals, and so much more enhance our quality of life. And I am dedicated to maintaining and strengthening these community assets. I really think Corleville is a gem. To have as many amenities as we have in a town this size and the development that we've seen is just been amazing. And also to finish up a quick thought on FLOC, since I didn't run out of time, I do think that putting in congressional, putting in contractual limitations is the way to get the good asset, the benefits from having those cameras, but also protecting people's fears, fears and concerns. So, thank you so much. Again, I'll be honored to earn your vote on November 4th. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Derek Schrader?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here and, and speak at this forum and, and thank, thank you to everybody that's here to participate in this and, and all the people watching. Yeah, I, you know, I've been a Realtor and I've coached in this community. Like I said, I have, have two kids, so I've had the opportunity to coach a bunch of kids at the Corleville Rec Center, and it'd be great to see that, that get built up and more resources for that. And then obviously at the soccer fields that we have and, and softball fields, my daughter still plays softball out there, which is great. Yeah, I think, I think any of us here would be great candidates for you and, and any of us that, that get elected up here. I, I don't think you can go wrong, honestly. I, I don't think you can go wrong, honestly. I, I think the reason for that is like, we, we care, right? Like, that's why we're up here, right? We care about the citizens of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Pope?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum and for promoting informed democracy. I also want to thank the audience. I'm really impressed. And I think that we can get together, we can discuss projects, and we can discuss our different opinions on them and get, get things done. I'm running because Corralville faces decisions right now that will actually shape our community for years. And many of them require thinking through consequences that a lot of people haven't considered yet. Housing and livable wages really matter. So does how we communicate about our infrastructure projects. I hope to fix that up. But I want to focus on something that's urgent, surveillance, surveillance and artificial intelligence. Let me explain. It sounds abstract, but it's not. Cities across the country are integrating surveillance systems, FLOC cameras, Ring doorbells, facial recognition, and using AI to interpret the data stream. Here's the problem. When you combine multiple streams, false positives multiply. Somebody walks by a crime scene, the car is similar to a suspect vehicle, an algorithm flags them as a person of interest, and suddenly they're under investigation, not because of the evidence, but because of the noise in the system. If, and if you're accused, you might never learn how you got accused. The government can classify the broader operation it could be. You won't know where the original warrantless procedure started at all. We've seen it happen, and if we can perform warrantless executions on the high C without consulting Congress, then I do think that it's possible that we can hide the information that would, that would free you. So Corralville's making choices now about surveillance technologies. We need a council member who understands these risks, who asks hard questions about false positives, can build the statistical infrastructure to test these valid bases and transparency before you. That's what I bring.
Thank you. Mike Knutson?
Thank you very much. I want to start by thanking the League and the city for letting me participate from California while I'm at a professional meeting. I'm sorry I won't be available afterwards to answer any questions. I would love to have been there. Certainly encourage folks to reach out to me. One of the things I'm proud of in the last four years while serving on council is replying to almost every email that I get, often addressed to the council in general. In the last three or four months, I may have led a few laps with some of the issues we've, we've dealt, but, but I really feel like I, I try to listen and respond to all, all of our constituents. I want to emphasize a few points. I, I have a 20-year track record of service to Corralville. I'm a scientist with expertise in data-driven decision-making, which I think brings a unique perspective to the, to the council. I'm a strong supporter for, an advocate for affordable housing and made sure we had language in the lost issue to support affordable housing. I've been very responsive to constituent input, you know, in both regards to the recent FLOC issue and the Human Rights Equal Protection Resolution. And, and I, I'm a strong supporter of social services. I advocated strongly, I forgot to mention this earlier, for a community navigator at the library, which, which supports the marginalized community. As I said, I, I donate my city salary to Houses into Homes, which I'm a Hall of Fame, Hall of Fame member now. I volunteer and also to the Corralville Food Pantry and Neighbors Helping Neighbors. And, and will certainly continue to support those social services, both personally and through my votes, votes on, on the council. I think they're critical to make us a living community. And I would certainly appreciate, appreciate your vote on November 4th or sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Wen?
Thank you so much to the League and to everyone for, you know, this civil discourse here is very important. So when I first ran five years ago, I didn't fully understand the inner working of local government. But over time, I've learned that change can be slow and sometimes frustrating. But it's always worth it when we can make progress together. I'm not an expert, but I'm deeply passionate about representing the many voices who often don't have a seat at the decision-making table. I value hearing from residents, their concern, their idea, and their hopes. And I rely on our city staff expertise to make thoughtful and balanced decisions that benefit everyday Corralvillians. That's a strange words. Right now, our community faces real challenges. On November 1st, 10,000 Johnson County residents will lose SNAP benefits, creating a 2 million monthly gap that local food pantry must fill. No matter who's elected on November 4th, we cannot ignore that thousands of our neighbors struggle to feed their families, pay rent, or have access to healthcare. This crisis remind us that how important that is, that we must come together to care for one another. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served you the past five years. The next four years will bring lots of challenges, but also hope and opportunity. I want to continue to be part of the solution in my private life, my professional life, and as your city council member. So Corralville can remain a place where everyday people can belong, grow, and thrive. So on or before Election Day, which is November 4th, I would be humble to have your vote for reelection so we can continue building a Corralville that work for everyday people. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Hotson-Villar?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, City of Corralville, and community members who took the time to come out tonight and ask the tough questions. I believe that all residents should have a voice in city government. Local decisions often have more of an impact on our day-to-day lives than we think. Being involved and participating in these decisions is critical if you have an opinion or want to share an idea. We are so lucky to live in such a diverse community. Our continuous growth and inclusive development have made Corralville a destination with a small-town feel. People travel here for our retail shops, restaurants, healthcare facilities. Our public library is an excellent resource for both reading materials and meeting spaces. We are fortunate to have Extreme Arena, the Corralville Center for Performing Arts, right here in our backyard. Our biking trails and parks offer endless opportunities to get outside. There are numerous indoor and outdoor activities for people of all ages and all abilities here in Corralville. I love living here. I'm running for city council because I want to give back to this community. I enjoy talking with all kinds of people and being involved in making important decisions that affect the residents here in Corralville. My promise to you is that if I do get elected, I will do my best to keep you informed about what's going on in your city. I will give you an opportunity to voice your opinion before decisions are made. I believe in affordable housing, community building, and inclusive development. I appreciate your time. Please vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Gill?
Okay, thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to hear all of the opinions of all of the other candidates running and the questions from the audience. It has been a real learning experience. I love Corralville, obviously, because I have lived here for 47 years, and I've seen a lot of change and been part of a lot of change. And I want to continue seeing Corralville thrive, and I want to be a part of this thriving community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Katie Freeman?
So times are pretty scary right now on a national and state level, not just for marginalized folks, for a lot of us. Things like Medicaid cuts and food insecurity only growing with the SNAP benefits ending on November 1st because of the shutdown. And marginalized communities are impacted the most by all of these changes. And so I really wanted to become a person to help amplify their voices within this space and within decision-making spaces. I have been attending city council meetings for well over a year now. So though I have not held office, I have tried really hard to learn about the process and, and to interact with all of the council members and the current mayor in order to better understand what is going on and what voices are missing from this space. And so if you give me a chance on November 4th, since my opening statement, my punchline was crashed. As a woodworker, I can make the table bigger. Come join and let your voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our candidates and to the audience here and at home and the Corralville AV team, who we have already given some credit to for making this videocast and live streaming possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember to cast your vote on the local option sales tax. There are informational flyers on lost, which I think is not a good acronym, available on the league table outside. Remember to vote in the election on or for Tuesday, November 4th. Now, early voting, now weekdays, you can go to the drive-thru at the HHS Building in Iowa City on Dubuque Street. And that is open from 8:00 to 5:00 during the week. And on Saturday and Sunday, November 1st and November 2nd, it will be open 8:00 to 5:00 on November 1st, and on Sunday, November 2nd, from 11:00 to 5:00. Corralville Public Library will be open for voting, early voting, November 1st, Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 and Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00. And then the Johnson County Auditor's Office, that's in the office at the Admin Building, is open from 8:00 to 5:00 on November 3. And then, of course, you go to your polling places on Election Day. Thank you all for coming. Good night.